Recording our board meeting. So tonight, the board meeting will be livestreamed and posted on GLTV. Only the public portion of the meeting is being recorded. The goal of recording the meeting is to provide information to the residents regarding district actions and initiatives. The discussions and actions of the board, the presentations and the comments from the public will also be recorded. This is not an official record of the meeting. The written minutes are still the official record of the board meeting. With that, I think it rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the power of the Constitution, our nation, and to God, who is in this world, who has been the living testament of our.
I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 23rd meeting. Motion second, on favor?
On my.
Posed. Those minutes are now part of the record. Donna, are there any correspondence?
No correspondence for tonight.
Great. We'll move on to report of our student representative. Who's going first, Alex? Great. Alex, I don't think that one's on. Okay.
JSA tied loose ends for their winter congress trip to Washington DC in a meeting on Tuesday. This Friday, chosen juniors and seniors on the MathWorks Math Model Challenge Team have an all-day practice session to prepare for the competition in two weeks. Last week, the Model UN delegation and Governor Livingston attended their annual Academy Model United Nations Conference at Bergen County Academies. During the conference, Matthew Zhou, Jessica Zhou, and Daniel Yavomovski were given a recognition as honorable mentions. Last night, the King of Hearts enjoyed the lighthearted jokes. Last Saturday, 27 interactive club members sorted food at the Hillside Food Bank. And finally, yesterday, the environmental science classes and environmental club invited the mayor of Berkeley Heights, Angela Levine, to talk about the new ban on single-use plastics during lunch.
Great, thanks. Emily?
Just won the New Jersey Ice Hockey League Sportsmanship Award and had five of their kids make honors for the conference. Boys wrestling just beat Roseell Park for the first time in eight years and made it to the sectional tournament. Basketball has been having a good season as well. They are most proud of their team effort, having multiple high scorers in each game. Boys and girls track will be going to their sectional meet this Friday and their county championship meet this Monday, hoping to place and advance to further meetings. Boys and girls swim just had their sectional semifinals this Monday. Unfortunately, this was the end of the boys' season, but the girls advanced to the sectional finals. The girls swim are headed down the shore today to compete against Rumsen Fairhaven, hoping to gain their fourth sectional title in a row. Go Gio.
Great, thanks. Any questions for our students? Jerry?
So basically, it looks like the deep, deep board student council that organizes the band, they much that students have like jokes and things.
Is it always much?
Of course.
Yeah.
We're actually up together. It's almost here.
It's very, it's very lighthearted.
Yes.
Are you going to be?
Oh, we have.
What are you doing?
I was a student.
Oh, you would stay back.
Okay, great, thanks. Let's move on to the report of the superintendent, Melissa.
So each year, the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education recognizes local champions making a difference in inclusive education for schools, children, and families in New Jersey. Our very own Michelle Gardner, Director of Special Services, is the recipient of the 2020 honor. Michelle will participate in the development of a video about effective educational practices and be honored at the 2020 Summer Inclusion Conference to be held at Governor Livingston High School in June. We will also have Mr. Fred Bouzillon, the Executive Director of New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education, in attendance at our March 12 board meeting to honor Michelle. And now I will start the district strategic plan presentation.
Before you start that, as you go over there, Chris, could you just give maybe a little intro into the strategic plan and why we're doing the update now and where this fits in with the rest of the strategic plan?
Happy to.
Thanks.
So, as you all know, we're about halfway through the fourth year of our strategic plan, which we started that process about five years ago. And it was very comprehensive, built a lot of consensus throughout the administration and the teaching community. And we've accomplished a lot. However, with our new superintendent, we thought it was appropriate to set the reset button, and she's brought a lot of new and exciting ideas to the table. And so, you know, we want her and her team to own it going forward. So we thought this would be an appropriate time for us to take a deep dive into the strategic plan and essentially, you know, re-engineer it and come up with a new five-year strategic plan. And that is what Dr. Barclay is going to present today.
Great, thanks, Chris. Melissa?
So, I'm Julie Nockstand, so I'm going to move around as much as I possibly can. So this is a very high-level sort of.
Yeah.
I always told everyone. So as you know, I sent a random survey out to the community as well as the parents. And while one of the slogans came back as something that most of our parents in our community liked, I got a lot of feedback saying, "Where's the word include?" And so I took it back to the admin team and we started talking about it. And one of our admin members said, "If you include, you inspire, thus empower." And so I modified our slogan to be "Include, Inspire, and Empower." So this is the Berkeley Ice Vision Day. Nothing has changed here, but I want to focus on the last two sentences. All students will become responsible at the global, community, and personal levels. Students, parents, staff, and community and the Board of Education are accountable for achieving this vision. And so that means everyone in this room, everyone right outside this room, we are responsible for making this happen. So if you take a look at this, and I'm going to highlight what has changed, I kept the basic premise of the strategic plan that was here before me. And your academic curriculum, I would like to expand professional development. Research shows that you need 50 hours to change a teacher's practice. So we know we have to give our teacher, we have to inundate our teachers with the need to make them the best they can be. Focus on K-5 instruction. Enhance access to academic academies for grades 8 through 12. Design a tiered system of supports. And this tiered system of supports is a student-wide requirement by the state of New Jersey anyway. But it is one thing to make sure our students are getting the skills they need early on before they end up in an instructional review or in some other kind of program that needs extra help. For our talent, I would like to use our newly found partnership with Columbia University to advertise our job positions and get some extremely professional teachers, not that our, to enhance our teaching profession. To continue to highlight our accomplishments, use our teacher leadership cohort to advance our current teaching staff. We also have student and staff wellness, which will address our prices, as enhanced training for staff. And one thing that most people aren't aware of, we have a child daily who needs a risk assessment. So we need to address those children in curriculum and classrooms daily to give them the tools daily. For technology, start the process of going in a more digital direction, which I mean using less paper. Moving away from iPads into Chromebooks. And for student achievement, ensure our teachers have access to data. It's great for me to have the data, but the teachers are the ones who need the data to ensure that they are addressing student weaknesses as well as strengths. Determine the reason our eligible students at the high school do not take APs. That will definitely help us in getting our students involved in the most academically rigorous classrooms. And then expand access to special education in a general education setting. So for the student achievement goal, the only thing I changed was 2024. I moved the data, and that is to target our students to ensure they are the top third tier of rankings according to our dashboard peer group. So if you see the four items I have here, and I've discussed them earlier, we're going to continue to analyze data. And I think the key here is making sure the teachers have the data. Tracking performance of determined benchmarks, and that's rate through six and 10. And I do reserve the right to change 10, just because a lot of our sophomores don't take the NJSLA. They have already passed their requirements moving up. Integrate a tiered system of supports, and then use Dibble's running record in our NJSLA data in the development of our SGA's. So we have our goals here, and again, we're talking about data. Doing our key focus of the dashboard ELA, math and science, and then our tiered system of supports. And that is addressing, coming up with a true curriculum design for our instructional review. Now, our biggest undertaking will be to design a middle school and high school academy to retain our students who are leaving us to go to other districts. There will be a, as of right now, tentatively slated, a board presentation in November of 2020. We met Scott and I and Rob and Frank, met with the supervisors on Tuesday, and they have some great ideas. Right now, they're at the idea stage, so nothing has been fleshed out just yet. But I was very excited to see that they're thinking outside the box. They have taken time to interview our eighth graders and to focus real students to determine why they are, why they seek other schools. And enhance embrace a new literacy program for K-5 and complete curriculum revamp for literacy. And so the teachers chose Teachers College Reading Project, which is at Columbia University. And they will get seven instances of PD for the next five years. The next goal is to create a consistent program of instruction across K-5 schools. Director, and have, right now, all four principals are in charge of their own curriculum. So we need to make the instruction across the, across all four schools equal. And this director of elementary and intervention, which takes on our instructional review, would take on all the elementary curriculum and create and design our curriculum for our little periods. Increase the number of students who meet college readiness standards by 5%. And this is kind of a loose goal because most of our students already reach college-level standards. However, we do know, based on some data we have, that we have a decent amount of students who do not take AEP courses. However, they are eligible for K-AP courses, and we need to find out why. What is it about those courses that they do not want to be involved with? And one of the things I have for the guidance counselors to do is to set up meetings with the parents and the students to find out why. Why are they not taking these courses? Improve the average time spent in general education programs for students with IEPs. And we're already doing this with our elementaries and now moving to the middle school and high school. We know that having high expectations for children is the best indicator of success. So by moving them into more general education programs, if they're eligible, if they're able to be successful, is the best thing, best thing for these children. And then to create a universal full-day kindergarten program. As everyone in this room knows, I am a huge proponent of early childhood education. Our pilots are praying in 2020. The children have been selected, the letters have been sent out, and we have met several times to go through schedules and supplies and making sure we're ready to go. And then we have begun our research. We have about five meetings for universal full-day kindergarten. We're not quite finished with everything we need to do there, but we are in a researching phase. And so number two, academic curriculum, one thing I changed was I added English language arts. Because you can be great at science, and you can be great at math, but if you can't read and write, you're not going anywhere. So one of the things is we want to make sure our students are able to read and comprehend, and then tell us how they read and comprehend by writing about it. And so again, a comprehensive plan for our instructional review, a revised and updated gifted and talented curriculum, plans for more interactive and engaging media centers. We have our referendum that is coming up. We need collaborative spaces where students can creatively think and think outside the box. Our academies for the middle school and high school, and expanded professional development opportunities to support initiatives. And then we add our goals on the side. Enhancing a new curriculum to include STEM and K-5. Our media centers will help us with a collaborative space where we have rolling tables, we have a wait till technology. The tiered system of supports for math and ELA. And then advancing our academic programs in grades 8 to 7. We'll see the retention, increase the retention, and I aim to low here, for Berkeley Heights students by 3%. It's going to take us a while to get this off the ground. And then we have started a process on this to determine the reasons why our students leave us. Repurpose the media centers and computer labs, and that is our referendum starting in September of 2020. Continue the leadership cohort. And we have just, we are going to have our board meeting tomorrow. It's pajama day. So we do hope this will continue throughout. We are, our teachers are really enjoying it. And then create a social and emotional learning curriculum for grades K-12. And right now, we have Ashley Janosco. That is, one of her goals this year is to create this learning curriculum. She's working with Mr. McHenny, and most of our principals have signed on to this goal as well. We have to help children deal with crises, trauma, and emotional issues. It is something we've got to take care of sooner rather than later. And then our robust PD model, or Choosing Teachers College, engage teachers and administrators in intensive data discussions. And again, they have to have that information in order to change their lessons to address those skills. And then facilitate and align curriculum and instruction model with Mountain Side. Work with Janet Walling's supervisors and principals to align as much as possible. I met with Janet this past week. We are preparing a presentation for both boards. And right now, we are aligned in math. We are working on aligning for ELA next year, and then we will focus upon, we're having a meeting regarding special education in the coming weeks. For a new evaluation system to ensure we are focusing on the best attributes of our teachers. So the goal number one is to research, develop, and recommend a new teacher evaluation system to highlight our teachers' strengths. If you Google Danielsson, you will see that she never intended to be an evaluation model. So we need to give our teachers the opportunity to come up, our DACT committee can come up with a new system, a new way to have themselves evaluated. And so moving on to developing our partnership with Columbia University, they send out all of our advertisements for our positions. And I can tell you from previous experience, we've gotten some amazing teachers through their, through their reach. Continue to promote the district using our public relations specialists, making sure that our best teachers and our administrators and staff remain in the district. And expand our teacher leadership capabilities through the teacher leadership cohort. Student and staff wellness. Individual parent meetings annually with guidance counselors. And this is for the high school level. I will tell you, I stole this idea from Chad, and I'm not sure if it's going to work just yet, but I'll come back to that. Increase guidance presence in elementary buildings. K-12 emotional learning curriculum, and then mindfulness training for staff and students. So again, the social-emotional learning curriculum is very important, it's vital. And I know I've gone through it a couple of times, so I'll skip on down to have parents and students with guidance counselors at the high school level annually to start a college career process. So this past year, this year, I met with my daughter's counselor in ninth grade, and he got her on an audience, he got us, myself, and her father on an audience to see what we need to do to get her ready to go. He lined out her entire four years, which we can make changes. And then next year, we'll meet again to see what we want to do. But I think it gives the students say, "Here's your four years, here's what you've got to do." And so I do have, is going to be one of Dr. Janosco's goals, to research next year to see how this can work for us. Provide PD opportunities for counselors, CST regarding tragic events. Again, you know, we always need to have our social workers trained to perform retraining. And, and, you guys are going to love this. Employ full-time guidance counselors in each building. And again, because of our overwhelming needs of our student population, when I tell you daily, we have risk assessments, and we, weekly, we send someone out for psychiatric evaluation. Our students need social and emotional help. Technology, provide our students and staff with state-of-the-art learning and operating environment by continually assessing and improving the efficient and effective use of technology. So improve communication with teachers, parents, and community, improve technology access in our media centers, and create a more digital culture throughout our district, and provide our students with access to the regular technology curriculum. So we are going to use School Messenger and possibly Genesis to their full capacity. Keep district informed regarding district events and initiatives. Move from iPads to Chromebooks in middle school and high school, and move our revenues to paperless. Create and store all agendas and attachments on a digital platform. If you need paper, we will provide it. Make most of our parent-teacher communications digital. Online report cards, all registration forms, newsletters, everything can be stored on our parent portal. And then create instructional technologists within the district. In Sparta, I had two instructional technologists that pushed into classrooms. They also did data reports for the state. But they pushed into classrooms and taught the teachers while the teachers were in there, ways to use advanced technology, kept them on their toes. And increase the number of our Google-certified teaching staff members. I know at the middle school and high school, we have a great deal of teachers who are already certified, but if we're going to use Google as our platform, everyone should be Google-certified. And for all that, questions? So a lot of information.
Hey, person in board? Here, I have to have the comments.
Okay.
No, I like the direction you're going, self-supported, to focus on the SCL. I think that we're seeing so many issues arise for that state with students. I think it's really important that we can help with that. So I certainly support that. I think the use of data is important. I think that sounds easier than it is because most schools are data-rich, but actually training something in terms of standard, it's utilized, it's a challenge. I'm sure you're able to do that. I like this technology person.
I like having somebody dedicated to assisting with technology because I think teachers and many people like my age or whatnot are reticent to that technology. And once you realize that it's a friend that can be utilized, it's really helpful. So I think having somebody there, who you would feel less intimidated with being able to show you how to do that, is important. I think it is important for everyone to be Google-certified. So I could go on and on. I'm hearing a lot of good things in here, and I'm happy in the direction you're going.
Maybe on the presentation that you mentioned about the full-day kindergarten pilot program, can you report on the numbers or anything? How did we do? Was it filmed, not filmed?
Right, answer right now. The deadline for registration, we haven't closed yet, but we did have 46 apply. So we have 10 on the waiting list, but I think they have, do you remember the date? Do you remember the date? That they have to registerize at March?
I think it's by middle of March.
Middle of March. So we have had a lot of feedback. We are going to have a parent orientation night at the end of the year, and then we're going to have an open house at the beginning of the year, next year. So we're going to bring them in, and then we'll bring them in again, just making sure that they're used to being in the public school.
So that's right now, that's what it's called?
It's called.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd like to add to what Jerry had said earlier. I definitely like all of the social-emotional learning, the focus on guidance counselors. One of the biggest shocks to me, when I joined the board, it seems to get bigger and bigger each year, this seems to be one of the hitting costs of educating children in this day and age. And I feel like if you don't get on top of it, it always comes back to bite you and cost you three times as much. So it's really nice to see the focus throughout this whole strategic plan.
Yeah.
Couple questions. Absolutely, very quick. So thank you, David. I was just wondering, it says, you know, one of the bills is to use paper. Can we keep track of that at all? Do we, do we know how much paper we're using now compared to 30 years, two years ago, three years ago?
Honestly, I don't know. I will tell you, this is a very paper having to do with. And it's one of those things that I have noticed, that they will send me a letter by email, and they give you a copy of the letter. And so, you know, I'm just trying to get everybody used to, I don't have to have a paper pocket of everything. And so I, the answer to that question is no. I don't know how much we use now as we used to use, but it's something I would like, I'd like to see what we're using currently, used to.
Right. I think part of the way you accomplish that is by knowing, you know, a huge check, how much people we buy, you know, year to year, and see which direction it's going, how quickly it's going, whether we're really making the progress we think we're making. And, you know, we buy the paper off the top, right? So we know the answer to that. But I think that's probably a bit discipline. You said you reserve the right to relook at grade 10 as to whether that's the right benchmark here. Which way would you move to, do you move to nine or do you move to 11?
Nine, because they have to have that for graduation. Did, right now, and Scott, maybe they would adjust this better than I can, but I hear they're kind of like, it's going to be a graduation requirement, it's not going to be a graduation requirement.
No, I think that's moved during the plan, and that's why it used to be 10, maybe raised, raised to 11.
It could be, absolutely. Is nine a great?
It's still a determinant, or I'll give it a point of thought.
Okay.
All right. And you said you were going to increase our retention rate by 3%, but I don't know if you said that number. Is that 3% of the kids currently are, you want to reduce the number of kids that are going out by 3%?
Yes, by 3%.
Okay, so if there are, you know, if there are 33 kids going out now, you would be looking to make that 32, because that would be a 3% reduction.
Well, so let me, maybe I need to figure my thinking. Like, I don't believe we're going to be able to keep everyone. There are children who every year, everyone in their family has gone to see Oprah. Everyone in their family has gone somewhere. So I'm not going to.
It should be our goal, because that's not, that's not necessarily the best thing to keep everybody. But yeah, what we should.
I can, I can increase that.
All right. It's crazy, what would that 3% of us?
Yes.
So, presentation was very good. I swallowed really exciting and really good things coming. So you mentioned moving towards Chromebooks. Is there a reason for the Chromebooks?
Well, so back when you, as a district, went to iPads, iPads were kind of the only affordable thing down there. I know Pascat Valley, Northern Valley, they were all using. I know Pascat Valley, Northern Valley, they were all using the Air, the MacBook Air. And those are so super expensive. But now Chromebooks are cheaper. And one of the things we know is that most businesses use laptops. They don't really use the iPad. And so we need to get our students used to typing and using an actual laptop as opposed to an iPad.
Rose, good?
Helen. Oh, Helen, I'm sorry.
I was just happy to see the inclusion. Adding the importance of the charts to the STE programs because I think it's kind of gotten more. And you're right, we're taking forward, we can't do without that.
If you can read, you can do anything.
So you've been here seven months?
Yes. Now we have a strategic plan.
And, you know, okay, so you surprised me. You came earlier than I thought it would. So congratulations. Your imprimatur is all over it. You've brought some really good ideas to the table. And it's quite substantive. And no, I don't think you're too aggressive. But I do have one question about the investment we're making in professional development. Is that also in partnership with Columbia? You may have said that, but I didn't see it in the edits. Thank you.
They will be coming in, they will be coming in as a thousand times a year.
So they're leading the teaching modules?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rose, good? Okay, let's go on to the board. So the second part of the presentation tonight is a discussion of this year's board goals. So this is the 2019, 2020 board goals. And there were five of them, which Melissa will review. So what you're getting is an interim update.
Do we get an instructional thing on?
That's right. So, last part, I was getting an interim update on the goals. And these are this year's goals. The one thing I should just also note, in the previous presentation, although Melissa didn't speak about it specifically, on the far right-hand column of that was the year. So it's a five-year plan. So some of the goals are this year, 2021. But if you look at that far right column, some of them say 23, some of them say 24, 25. What we tried to do, the top of the list, is make sure that we pace ourselves. Obviously, we're not going to accomplish all of those in year one. Our goal is to make sure that we, and the whole administrative team is, you know, making events in each of these areas by year. So, you know, when you go through that table, you'll see that it's over the course of five years. But this next one is focused on just this year and the five goal for this year.
And you will see a lot of this relates back to the strategic plan. So I will ask questions, I will ask some questions after, but a lot of it I've already said. So that's the reason I did the strategic plan first. So if you look at our goals, the Berkeley High School District will improve academic achievement through innovative curriculum, professional development, enhance instructional practices for all students. Increase the practice of analyzing data to improve instruction. Increase the focus on social emotional learning, student and staff wellness and safety and security. Promote high-quality and rigorous, key-classroom environments by implementing developmental, appropriate instructional approaches and methodologies. That will include a comprehensive plan for full-day kindergarten. And increase the opportunities for students with disabilities to engage and participate in general education settings while ensuring the support in the general education environment is effective and student-centered. So increasing academic achievement. Teacher leadership award, and we had four meetings so far. We will have, well, three meetings. We'll have one tomorrow, Dr. Ellie Drager-Sederson. Our Teach Like a Parent initiative. So we had Dave Burgess come in in September. And he talked to our teachers. And he is quite an innovative teacher. And in the things he talked about, he talked about a myriad of things. But in Lord's Teach Prohibition, he turned his classroom into a ski easy. And he said that every year, kids fought to get into his classroom because he turned everything around. And one of the statements he asked our teaching staff is, would the kids come to your classroom if they did not have to? And I would say, I know I have witnessed, since the year has started, I've been to a skate room at the middle school where they have converted, they did Edgar Allan Poe, and they converted their classrooms into a very dark and dreary classroom. I have seen pirate lessons throughout this district. So, and so I would say he was money well invested. We had, I have teachers sending me videos of lessons they've taught when I couldn't make it to their classroom. So great deal of innovative lessons. And then math, ELA, science and social studies and world language. We have done those midterm updates. And you were all evoted from them in November, I think. And increase the practice of analyzing data to improve instruction, K-5 and building-level data meetings. And one thing Jerry said when he was talking was that teachers have to know what they're looking at. And because I'm, I'm used to looking at data, I know what I'm looking at. But that's where the administrative team comes into play. They have to know, they have to be able to pull up Miss Jones' roster and realize that every student her class scored low on modeling. And so that's where we know we've got a curricular or an instructional weakness. And so if you look at the research, the research shows that you can have the best curriculum, you can have the best classrooms, but if you have an ineffective teacher, it doesn't matter. And so we have to make sure our teachers are effective and they understand data so that they can address the weaknesses and strengths of our students. So if you see, you can see all that, I don't have to read it for you. But one of our last parts is making sure all of our data is imported into the data dashboards so that we can get that information out to the teachers and we can adequately talk to them about it and what it, show them what it means. And this is a lot. So I'm not going to read all this. But this is the social emotional learning, which we all agree is so very vital to our student population. And so at Mary Kay McMillan, they have adopted Dr. Marius Elias's social decision-making. And then we have the elementary teach, the elementary principals just got through the kindness matters. And I will say, I was at Hughes today, and Ms. Nardi said that one of her students asked if they could start meeting again. So obviously, we've got a little bit to go. And at CMS, they have the advisory meetings. And they are also working really hard to make sure that our students have character-building lessons and they are trying to be kind. At GL, Dr. Janasko and the admin team have been working to create common language and focus on wellness. And then the district safety team has met several times. And our, all of our district safety teams have a parent involved. And we're trying to reduce our amount of HIVs. If you saw the HIV report, we're down this month, which is kindness is actually mattering. So we are very happy about that. And so then promote high-quality, rigorous curriculum, complete reading classroom environments. And that's with our Readers' Writers Project. We are adopting from Columbia University. Our reading specialists were sent on site visits to renew reading instruction programs. And we're currently working on scheduling a math visit. And in full-day kindergarten, we've had five meetings, transportation, construction, enrollment projections, supplies and teaching and support staff. And then our students with disabilities. And so we've been really working very hard. Michelle and her team have trained regarding field teaching, making sure that both teachers are invested in what's happening in the classroom. And a secondary consultative committee has been working on an inclusive model there as well. And then you see the workshops. And that is, we're working on anxiety with our students. We are, the psychologist conducted a workshop on Down Syndrome. So we have been working really hard in the district. And now questions?
Question 20, Mike?
Just a comment, I don't, I didn't see it here, but I believe Mr. McKinney, yeah. We are adding civics elective at the middle school. And I think you said, you know, we're starting that as an elective, but we're anticipating that it could ultimately become a requirement?
Currently, we have proposed a civics elective that we believe that all of our students should do. There is legislation that is following. We believe we're ahead of the legislation. You feel it's important and.
I think that's great.
So yes, that's a, it's going to be a positive for the middle school.
And I have reached out to Andrew Devaney to talk about having our students work with the town council to learn about their local government. That's great. That kind of stuff is great for kids.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, on the, um, on the, um, the dash, the dashboard, to determine strengths and focuses. One of the things that I hear from people is about the timing of feedback assessments. And so to compare, had that be a piece of it, that the supervisors are tracking how quickly the assessments are graded and that they can hit at their scores. Because if, you know, it's a very long disconnect between when you take the assessment and when you get the scores back, it's much less effective in terms of being able to use it to include your performance.
Other comments or questions from the board? Okay, great. Melissa, thank you. Did you have any else to share?
No, that is the end of superintendent's report.
Great, okay, thanks. Let's move on. Liaison reports, are there any liaison reports? Mike?
Yes, so last night we had first, Facilities and Browns Committee, who's a great kickoff meeting for the committee. The architect of the board architect came in to give a great overview of where we are over the last few years of working with the Don, how we're getting ready for our primary, our 12th morning. Does do a pop quiz for those who are not at board meeting last night, at the committee meeting last night. Anyone can guess what the average age of buildings are in the school district?
Every building is 1960.
So what's the average age of all of those? 58. 58, anyone else?
I can't.
66.8 is the average age. And anyone can guess what the oldest is? That's hard. So now we know why we need to invest in our infrastructure. So it was a great meeting, board meeting, and then the volunteer leader as superintendent presented the different goals in there. We met with it. You know, the bulk of it is our new media centers, STE, STEM labs, everything. So a lot of great information was given out last night and more to come. The parts of this, they're not the days.
Correct, right. Thanks, Mike. Other liaison reports?
Yes. New Jersey School Boards Association, the New Jersey Department of Education is proposing changes to teacher evaluations. The amount that student growth objectives contribute to the overall evaluation will be reduced to 15%. Governor Murphy announced new initiatives to support youth mental health. Mental health first aid training will be available for K-12 school and higher education personnel. The initiative mirrors many of the recommendations of the NJ SBA task force on mental health. NJ SBA 2020 Annual Special Education Program awards are due March 30. Awards are to recognize successful programs and services for students with special needs. County School Boards, the Young Son Heroes Program will be launched 11th at Plainfield High School. Ed Services, preschool, kindergarten, autistic program continue to grow. Middle school program is growing even faster. And the new tuition rates have been sent to the districts. The Environmental Commission Township projects are calling for a large number of trees, 200 plus at Conell property and 600 plus at the former Little Flower School location. And more to come. Concern is about the tree canopy. Could, just throwing it out there right here, could the tennis courts in the former Rocket site at G L be considered as an area to look at for reforestation? Working with the township on the Connell Fitness Trail Plan, replacement of trees, appropriate foliage and drainage. And they're working on implementation plan with the township for plastic ordnance.
Great, thanks, Helen. Are there any other liaison reports?
Yes.
Chris?
The Finance Committee met last week and we did a comprehensive first pass through the proposed preliminary budget for 2021. I think we're in good shape from a timing perspective. We will have a package to the board in early March. And then we will vote on the 2021 preliminary budget, I believe, at the March 12th.
Correct.
Sure. Just as an FYI, I've been asked by New Jersey School Boards to sit in on their Rantell Health Steering Committee. And we have a first meeting next week. Keep everyone apprised of what we're doing. The, our goal is to develop guidance for districts throughout the state on the implementation of programs to address the mental health needs of our students. So I'm glad everybody knows that.
That's great. I'm just giving everything that Melissa just said previously. It's great that you'll be, you know, right there at the, at the table to hear that. So that's, that's great to hear.
Great, nice to hear that, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay, any other liaison reports? Okay, we'll move on. Facilities, Don?
Um, the, an update on the GL media center replacement. All the products, all the products and materials have been produced. The mechanical equipment is in production. The contractor is anticipating delivery ahead of the April break when the bulk of the work will be completed. The remaining work will be completed after school hours. And the project should be completed by the beginning of May. We have been reviewing and prioritizing capital maintenance projects to be included in next year's budget. We anticipate the budget for these projects to be approximately $300,000. And as Mike said, the Facilities Committee met with the architects to review projects for the upcoming referendum.
Great, thanks, Don. Preliminary citizens here, anybody wishing to address the board on agenda? Melissa? All right.
A couple of questions. What, um, I loved the presentation on the strategic plan.
Thank you.
And I was convinced, I'm sorry, I guess he could inspire and power. Yes, very cool. The Director of Elementary and Intervention, is that a new employee full-time before you? Well, that, I see that's not until 22, 23, but, or is that just a new role for?
It is a new employee.
New employee, okay. In regards to the AP and honors courses, it's very interesting. I can't wait to hear what the response is for that. In my head, I won't spend, leave an extra period of the day. It's sort of totally offering in trying to fit all the breadth of what's offered. Especially we didn't go magnet for all the way out. And there's so many things she's trying to figure out for her faculty. It's almost like you need more time to get all done. So sometimes it's just hard to take on that much at that level. The teacher in charge position, it's very quick to that level.
So at our four elementary schools, we only have a building principal. So if they want to, they're not, they're sick, but they need to go to a workshop. There's no one in charge of the building. And so the teacher in charge will be a person with administrative or something that is in training on our safety and security procedures. And they will be there for the day to be in charge of it.
I would, or, and, well, they can charge. And I said, I've been fighting for it a month before my daughter graduated high school. It's sophomore, so we forgot it. I'm very excited on the, so.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, I will move on. Let's move on to the rest of our agenda. Administration?
Move administrations, 14A through 10.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya? Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristina? Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes, education.
Move 15A through 10.
Motion to second, any discussion? I just have one comment, and Melissa, I think you talked about it. Some of these new courses are tailor-made to work with the town council, the board of ed, and the police department, whether it be the CSI ones, so. And you started to say that you've talked to the mayor about doing that. So we should use our different forms of government, elected officials, our police department as, as prime for that. So I was glad to hear that you were saying that. Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya? Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Doc, uh, Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristina? Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes, 16 personnel.
I'll move 8 through J.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya? Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Dr. Chris, uh, Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristina? Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes, 17 business.
I move business high of 8 through N.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya? Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristina? Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes. Finance, 18.
Before I move 8 through D, I did the bills today, and they look fine.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya? Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristina? Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes. Final citizens here, anybody wishing to address the board or any other?
Yeah, I just missed one question.
That's okay, that's okay, that's why we have two of them.
The other thing I noticed in regards to technology was to have everything in digital. I recently went to the university of civic, where they were discussing about ransomware, and at a PTO meeting as well, before that a parent had asked. Oh, Sarah, this is civic with you, yeah. But at the GL PTO meeting as well, the parent asking, how are we ready for such things like ransomware? If that's to happen, is there going to be paper backups? So that we can just say, like, yeah, yeah, we'll rebuild instead of paying for a type thing, like to zero the period. But as we go more and more digital, which I agree, through paper, and, and I like that we fill in forms, not just get a form online and register, but fully fill it up. Is there some type of backup or other hard backup of GPA upgrades going forward? Or just even my, it's software, it's more than I do. But I, Mike and I have many more community conversations about ransomware, because a lot of the little school districts have been hit. So I'll let Scott answer that since he kind of knows better.
The short answer is yes. We have multiple types of backups, both on property and on property, that will help us in case. And, you know, there have been instances where there have been issues. And then additionally, I do believe that we are sure to help with, if we were, were to be struck by ransomware. And then finally, we do a lot of internal professional development regarding phishing. And we, you know, use tools that are available for us to gauge how, you know, do we have vulnerabilities? Where are they? And that we educate our staff, because just like any other security, it's people, people is the weak link in the system. So we try to, you know, combine that with training as well. So this is, we go to these technology conferences like I spoke, we were just working it out till 10. You know, you listen to somebody's things, it makes you want to come back and unplug everything. But we know that's not the answer, and we're working on it a lot of times.
Do you have these, would they print high school transcripts of lead material, like have one of the end year copies somewhere?
My understanding is our exposure is less than a day updated. So, so, you know, it's backed up.
Oh, I got you, yeah.
And so, so while, well, not, not back to paper, it's backed up to other electronic and, and put on the side so that, that, that if we, you know, if, if there were a attack or if there were just some touch topic, a electronic failure, we would be back to where we were less than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Great, thanks, Melissa. Is there any other business to come before the board? Not seeing anybody, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We adjourn, we are back on March 12th, and the focus of that will be our budget presentation. Great, have a good rest of the night.